Okay.
We are live. I'd call the meeting to order, the City of Pointeau Board of Alderman Meeting, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It stands for funding. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the republic which stands on issue and on guard under this law to protect and justice for all. All call please.
Alvin Hyden-Mellon, here. Alvin Brusson, here. Alvin Stokoe, here. Alvin Lipman, here. Mayor Fortune, here.
Have a properly posted agenda for tonight's meeting. There are no changes to the agenda. I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to the agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Foes, agenda is approved. Any citizens in comments at this time? Anything on the page? You too, whatever.
Nope, you too, nope, happy yet.
Okay. Consent agenda, Board of Alderman, regular meeting minutes from April the second. Bill's list, March twenty-ninth to April eleventh. Credit card statement for March twenty-twenty-five. Any comments or questions? I hear those. To approve as presented. Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, foes, since agenda is approved. Board of Communities Financial Report, Dave Watson.
About. I have, uh, only been in for a quarter of twenty-five already. Probably too much to have planned. Took on first page of the board's balance sheet. Uh, we have, you know, the cash, the CD over quite two million dollars. That's what the assets, well. Quite good, and both fund balance of over, uh, two point six million. Uh, if you look on the second page, uh, the payment revenues, uh, expenditures from pages and fund balance for three months. Uh, would, uh, alert you to the highlighted area with the fund balance of, uh, beginning of the year. That is two, two million four hundred seventy one thousand total in all funds. Uh, that, that may change a little bit with the, the audit going, film going on. Uh, but that is quite a bit more than a couple hundred thousand more than what we had planned up, uh, beginning of the year, uh, that'd be a bunch. So, for really good sake, now, part of that's gonna be taken up when, of the capital project and had some delayed expenditure for that. So, we're in really good shape, or if that goes. Uh, revenues, uh, are about thirty-four percent higher than a year ago on, on the cash basis. Uh, below the first three months, obviously, sale tax is a big part of that. There are also, both the smaller ones have, have seen some good fluctuations. And they're mostly kind of being property tax last year came to lower, uh, because of free assessment, so the property tax will go higher. Uh, I mean, say, like, much higher, but, uh, value higher because of that lowness of last. Uh, uh, other revenues are pretty much, we've, and half of them income up quite a bit. Interest rates, private iron, we, we had money in CD, uh, that's a lot of that. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh, we're down about thirteen percent, uh, and a lot of that is spent, spent a little bit more capital improvements at this point than we've had last year than we could this year. Uh, some of the reallocation of, of, some of the salaries, putting more for parks than we did in road. That explains why, uh, road is down a little bit, parks is down. Uh, parking expenditures are down because we did quite a bit of landscaping a year ago. Not repeated this, this year yet anyway. Uh, but overall, we're, we're up a little bit in, in, in the wages category. Um, and that's due to timing to be at two, from seven tables this year versus six last year. So, uh, but it's all, they're pretty much as planned and, uh, no significant, uh, issues of funding in the resident service, you know, might over up about seventy-seven hundred there. Both home of all of that is higher, no removal cost, uh, twenty-five, first, uh, four people per person, three months. So, very little, uh, last year. Uh, the sale tax numbers on these, uh, are starting to level off. Big Johnson show during February, parts without, a little, a little bit clearly, uh, less than what last year, but it's still very high. April's number is going to be, uh, lower than last year, so it's, it is a level up. Nothing's, no significant, it is very stable, though, even though our graph shows that I haven't, um, distribution by mistake. Then the last page is the, uh, budget for two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we've increased the, the, the number from the original budget for cap home improvements due to the amendment. I think that, uh, February, cap home, for park cap home improvement, I think eighty thousand. But as you can see, um, this budget shows as, as it is now, we'll end up with a fund balance of two point five million if everything came into plan. But we do know that's, that's the, the expenditure.
You know, I've been on this board a long time. This is the most impressive board we've ever had.
Well, I guess, I guess it's all in your hands.
Well, no, it's not, it's all of. Make things work here. And make a picture of it. Thank you, Jake.
Jake?
I guess.
Oh, not yet. Park Committee.
It's Jim.
Good night, Aaron.
Bye.
Thanks for having me. Uh, we had a meeting of the Park Committee last week, and, uh, we had a lot of important things to talk about. But, uh, the mayor came and talked to us about the idea of expanding the number of people on the Park Committee. I know it's on the agenda later on, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it, but basically about that. So that we don't have problems with forums, so that if we have a leadership change, we can have backup and so forth. That's all. I'll let, I'll let you handle that later in the meeting, but it was a good discussion. I think the Park Committee is a hundred percent on board, and so we're all good there. We also spent time talking about Easter eggs, and, uh, I really appreciate all of you who showed up to help out on Saturday. I think we put stuff in nine thousand million eggs. We're getting exact now, but that's closed, and, uh, did we finish?
We have all of the eggs wrapped here in my car, except the one that I brought in. The two more boxes and a little bit, you can see over there, um, and I think they're doing it tomorrow morning.
Nine o'clock, so we got a little bit more left, or we're, we're getting. Um, for anybody that's interested in coming out early to help on Saturday, uh, we'll be getting together about eight-thirty in the park to distribute eggs. Drink a bottle of this and be ready for, uh,
Hopefully the weather.
Big, yeah, 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 set, umbrellas.
We'll be making a decision at eight AM off the rain and, um, making announcement by eight fifteen if we have to cancel. So, there will be an email going.
Date for that as well, maybe?
There will be an email going out tomorrow morning to our email list that says just that, that weather dependent. We're gonna make a decision at eight AM whether we think we can delay a little bit and, uh, save those millions of eggs for next year, I guess.
I think it's interesting that we spend more time talking about Easter eggs than the entire.
Yes.
But, the board. Anybody, uh, assuming it doesn't rain, eight-thirty on Saturday, or wanna come out and have an early start on the Easter egg hunt. Um, Arbor, Arbor Day has been planned, uh, we'll be starting the grill at ten-thirty. And kids will be coming at eleven, there'll be about forty of them from, uh, Pointeau School. Perfect, obviously invited, if you're interested in that, and, um, I think that's pretty much what we had on our agenda. We're pretty much in line for everything else that I got reported last night. We've got a band today. Got pretty much everything else laid out for, for the next few months anyway. Questions? Built the next meeting, maybe we'll be voting for their then, chairperson or whatever it is? Yeah, we made, we made Cindy Cornelius the new vice chair. I would be surprised if you didn't know that they've been caring for it forward.
Me too. We're gonna try and do that. We're all committee people too. Whenever their meeting is in June, and they will all be elected to chair people at that time, so.
And then, thank you. Jake, Jake doesn't have a report.
He does, but he's late. All right, yeah, number twelve.
Okay. Okay, old business, fireworks, rain day. Everybody's really wild.
Yeah, there we are again.
Here we go.
It's raining, so, um, I did get, um, asked by some of the Alderman after the meeting to, uh, pursue a fall date perhaps. So I did talk to, um, our fireworks show people, and I asked them about August twenty-ninth, which is Labor Day weekend. So it would be the Friday of Labor Day weekend if we wanted to pursue that as a later date. Um, there's a lot of pros for that in that we could have an easier time scheduling police, have an easier time scheduling potentially a band, rescheduling all the things. The other moving parts besides the fireworks. And so I did ask them about the twelfth, that they could be available on the twelfth as well, but again, those are, that's a challenging date for us to secure all the other moving parts that we need for the show to go off. So the discussion in front of you, I would put it to the board to say, do you want to pursue the twelfth a week and a half later? Or do you want to go ahead and move with the fall date being the Friday on the, on Labor Day weekend?
I would, I would rather have the fall. For reasons. When we added the board, it was, I, I thought it was stressful, I thought it was comfortable, and, um, I had a good turnout. We could have a better turnout, I think, this time if we're probably.
Yeah, I, I, I sent this after the meeting to whoever was standing around me. Uh, that I like the separation. I mean, people, I think if you go to a week out, you're within that same couple of days, yes, it's fun, right? But like, again, we're done with Fourth of July, right? Like, so by that next week, I do feel like it, it will just be too separate. But I, I feel like probably, I enjoy the fall that we have a lot of time, and I think it's that way. If you think that we have a good turnout, we did for a lot of time to celebrate. And I feel like if we knew we were doing that.
What kind of timeframe do you call the fall?
August twenty, August twenty is the date that I recommend fall, the Friday of Labor Day.
I like the fact that it's a Labor Day weekend.
So it would be celebrating Labor Day instead of Fourth of July, so it kind of makes more sense with the idea we might have. And it times it in joy, they might have family members when they, might have holiday day.
I think it's got the one other draw for my years.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, switching on those two dates that quickly would be very difficult.
Yep, yeah, no, I agree. I think logistically, um, it's, I think, more fair saving for the day of the show. Ask them to, to come a week and a half later. Have it on that event, and they have to cancel. Like, that's a, that's a, that's an event that they could have had that they escaped now because it's too late. Right? In Labor Day, it gives them that much more time to make schedule or something, yeah. I think logistically, it's, uh.
Yes.
Any chance we can reschedule a concert for then?
Well, we don't know that. Of course, we haven't talked to the band, but there is a higher likelihood that we could get them to potentially hold that date for us.
Yeah.
Than if we, if it's a week and a half later, the answer would likely be no, there's certain votes for every weekend is.
So, your motion to try to schedule the rain date probably twenty-ninth of August.
I would make that.
All favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Okay.
Okay, we will amend the contract, and we'll have that so people have access.
Okay, new bill, number twenty-five oh four. Uh, this is related to, uh, Park Committee membership. Uh, we, we were put in a, an unusual position here, in that we had more applicants in that position available by committees, and especially on the Park Committee. And with this, people and I talked about this, and we were both kind of of the same opinion that we have people that really wanna be on these committees, we oughta try, do everything we can to put along these committees. So, uh, we had applications from the departments, had applications from Autumn Leaf, had applications from the Burnham Wood, so we're getting, getting a lot of good people from all over. And, uh, so we talked with all about this, how we could, uh, change our ordinance, so we could complement additional people. And, uh, make sure that we were, uh, still operating properly with the forums. So, this bill is supposed to correct that situation, but wanna read that?
Sure. Um, and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-five of the Pointeau's municipal code pertaining to the membership and meetings of the Park Committee. So if you had a chance to read it before, the red is obviously the new that we added. Like Russ mentioned, there is speculation where we can say what, what number we need for forums. So that way, if in the future we have less members or more members, we can still have that same number of a forum, so that we don't have to keep changing this bill to add when we subtract members of the.
So the quorum never changes?
So the quorum never changes, but the number of people on the committee could fluctuate.
I'm reading, sir.
Sure. Bill number twenty-five dash oh four, and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-five of the Pointeau's municipal code pertaining to the membership and meetings of the Park Committee.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-five oh four.
Thank you.
For all, please.
Alvin Hyden-Mellon, yes. Alvin Brusson, yes. Alvin Stokoe?
Yes.
Alvin Lipman?
Yes.
Bill twenty-five oh four, come over, this is twenty-five oh four by unanimous vote, thank you. Discussion items, Harvey Services landscaping, plan for the intersection. It includes.
Yeah, so I've.
Graphics to show you there.
The facts to read the memo, um, in looking at our landscaping plans in prior years. So, those of you who remember the foliage and sweet potato vine that we've been planting for, I'm not even sure how many years, it's been a while. So basically, that is, in a nutshell, what it costs us approximately for a year for those to be planted in the intersection. So that's including the labor time for planting, the labor for the maintenance, and then removal of the plants. So they're pretty costly to have there for that, um, short amount of time, and then the rest of the year. Obviously, as we see now, those, uh, planters just dead empty. So, um, Harvey, Jonathan Harvey Drum, uh, Harvey Services, who does a lot of our landscaping work, talked to Jake and I about what the options were, and he said he had been mentioning this for the last several years to try to get us to do something different there that would be more year-round annual, that would be less maintenance, less watering. So the suggestions that he came up with are what I showed there in the photos. So, he's suggesting, um, some of those green velvet boxwoods that need to be, um, pruned in that shape, or he suggested even like a full hedge we could do as they grow up together. And then the trees would be in those square planters that are on each side, and then filling in with the mariahbe, which are those, uh, purple and brown cover. These would all be perennial plants. So I just put together, so, and here's the estimate from him of how much that would cost people that hit the intersection. Um, Jake and maintenance staff will have to do a little bit of work, um, getting that one side of the planters set up because those, at one point, we had boxes created and, and the ones on the north side of the intersection. I'm not sure why or why we, when we did that or why, we don't know. But we, uh, it was because of doing the same thing this side as too. Okay, so we just did the one side of the plant, but we never fixed the other side. Okay, gotcha. Well, so there's gonna have to be a little bit, like another box built in the center essentially, and then that side needs to be over top soil. But that's something that we can potentially do in house and get it ready for them to just come to be planted. So the, um, rendering is just something that I did so you could get a sense of, Harvey doesn't really do that kind of rendering, but I was like, I just wanna get a sense of what it would look like. So the idea with the little planters in front, those, they do not have to look exactly like that. We'll have to source our own. He's only gonna do the big box plantings, but we could then buy some smaller planters. And then I thought that might be a good camouflage for the village of Pointeau, so he can probably cover up for a number of years. And then our staff or volunteers, if they wanted to, or whatever that looks like, could plant more colorful annual in there. And those can be for shop and seasons. We could do something like little Christmas trees at Christmas or something like that, so.
That would be on both sides.
That would be on both sides of the intersection. I just did the picture of the one side of the intersection, so. Just so that you could get a visual.
Nice job, Alvin.
Great.
The round platter. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can source something similar to that, or, you know, those, maybe even those are exact ones, I'm pretty sure I stole them off a whole K B website, so.
Have we blew those, uh, planners down?
What's that?
Those round, big round planters. I felt like it should need to maybe bring that.
Yeah. Those areas too on the grass that are gonna become grass that they used.
Oh, yeah, that is part of it too, thank you for bringing that up. So where we did the foliage and the sweet potatoes in the triangles, so out kind of in the intersection, he suggested for mowing, maintenance, that we just, they've essentially already become grass right now. They've been taken over by grass. And he suggested that we keep them that way. So we talked about maybe in a future project, or sometime this year, depending on when the trees could be planted, that we might do two oak trees in those intersections from Pointeau's and have them growing just in the center, like a more natural in those triangular parts of the intersection. So, but that would be part of the future project. Harvey's estimate is just to do the rectangular and the square planters.
We have to be careful on the triangles with the visibility to.
Yeah, it's fun to have a high. Yeah, it would have to be like a tall oak tree that maybe, you know. Not something short. Yeah, exactly. We got to buy fairly mature trees, so they'd be expensive.
I got a tree.
Oh, really? Yeah, it's a leaning, but, yeah, otherwise it's great.
It's coming, it's coming.
So we'd have to delay this until, and begin this arrow.
No, no, this is. One forty-one, not falling.
I thought it was falling.
No. Yep. So that was the hope was that we could get this passed instead of, like, just to do this project. It was a one-time cost, essentially, unless then we spend every year, but forecast spread out all the time. So that we can tell Harvey, hey, go with this, this is what we wanna do. Normally, he does those plantings in May, so late May, it's another day that, um, the times that we won't plant the foliage, so. We'd like to go with a different plan this year and see how it goes. See if we can save some money on some, and the labor costs on making this intersection, and make it look good all year round rather than just for.
Yeah, I will have, I'll have someone.
Six, like five months. Right, right, so.
Yep, have a chance to see it on Saturday, follow a shirt, picture of it. We're, we're due for a change, that, that, that look good. More smarters are to go for.
Oh, you wanna make a choice about the, like, I like the white thing. But I see the other one, I like. Those are the same tree. Oh, just a different time of year? That's in the fall. The red berries are in the fall, the same tree. And he's, he specifically suggested this tree because it is slow-growing, and because it offers year-round interest.
Doesn't drop.
It doesn't drop stuff, doesn't make a mess, it's hardy, it does well. And one place that I saw them actually was, if you've been up to the Target in Town and Country, they have them all over their shopping center. That hole outside, which I'd never noticed them until, of course, he pointed about, now I see them everywhere, right? Like, obviously, that's why. And they're slow-growing, so they're not gonna, you know, escape. Yeah.
Showers.
Yes, exactly. So he said they'd be ideal for this location. Do we need to review the certain. All for it or all?
Um, you, you think so, or are we still with the agreement that we give them?
Harvey.
Yeah, I mean, you don't.
Well, you can still, we're getting through. I mean, the budget you think is already there.
Right, you standard. You already manned it, we could already send them.
Yeah, so it should use the standard kind of bill, so they already know the terms of that.
Yeah, he does. Yeah, okay, perfect, great. Good.
Attorney's report?
We have no report.
They're gonna get nervous.
I'll pass.
Why did that pass?
I can't, I can't, it's bad.
Yeah, pass then? Okay, public works report.
Thank you all for having me. So, public works maintenance updates. I measured a bunch of locations. Me and Isaiah, actually, I tried to take him with me around as much as possible, kinda get him moving and proof of type thing, so. But measured the locations, I need a curb repair or replacement. I sent the information to April for the RFPs. Um, we, I contacted a plumber to fix, uh, the backfill valve that was stolen over here. And the irrigation guys told me when they're down the park that there was a couple seals that need to be replaced, uh, in the conference station. So they gotta look at that too, and then also there's a water fountain that's been leaking for god knows how long. And, uh, they actually slowed it down, but they're gonna fix that too. Uh, they'll have to shut it off, like, in the main, uh, so a little bit of digging with that, but it's that one of the inches of park bench, so it's a little there, and those kind of, you couldn't sit at the bench at all, so. Uh, we fix hopefully in the next couple weeks. Um, on last Friday, we had Parkway South students come, um, there was like ten of them. And they helped us, we did a lot of staining in the park, uh, saved a bunch of the railing for the fence, and then a bunch of the benches and all that. Uh, that was Parkway, for the Parkway Service, was really nice, helpful. They are moving the whole time, so it was really nice. They get too much stain all over their bodies, right? Um, and then working on equipment, uh, tool assessment, purchase additional items is needed, including like a trailer, uh, for the mule, so we can easily haul around halls and start doing a lot of that stuff internally. The park, I feel like we could save some money that way. I'd say, and maybe the new persons, some work for the entire year. Um, I updated all the city hall. I got like halfway through, still gotta get some plants and everything for the back of city hall, but I've removed a bunch of dead trees, bushes up front, uh, installed some new ones. Uh, project updates, uh, for the roof replacement insurance claim, I've been still talking with a couple different roofers trying to get bids. Still waiting them on, on those, supposed to get them by the end of this week to see, um, kind of between a couple different companies that could do the work and hopefully get that backed out. Park pump maintenance, so I was, didn't really know it was down in the bell house, but I kinda cleaned it up really well one day, and we found the pump, backup pump from, that we apparently had that, uh, oh, maybe you guys knew, but we didn't know where it was at.
We knew we had a pump. We had no idea where.
So I did find that, uh, so the pump, I had Cardinal come up here. They actually took that pump, and then they took the pump from the top, uh, area too. And they tested both, the, the one pump was bad, but the backup pump, right down in the main area is the good pump, so, well. I was thinking about getting a camera down there, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to get a camera, we wouldn't be able to see much, and I talked to the guys today about that. So, we might have to end up getting that inlet that comes up through, uh, pump house area. We might have to get that balloon and just. We might have to get that balloon and just get in there and clean that area out somehow to see if there's anything in there. Cause apparently the existing pump had a bunch of debris sucked up. And the turbine in there beat everything up. And there was, I just don't want that to happen even at the backup pump. But I think we can get that thing in there, get it running from parts, the old pump. And maybe just go after that after. Definitely clean it up and see what, see how it does, you know, and it might last a week, it might last three years, you know, so I think it's worth a shot cleaning that area first. And the park mulch planting, so it was, we kinda decided, I think I'm gonna start kinda hitting like areas of the park. That is literally one of the most beautiful parks I've been to, but it's just, it's in need of a little bit of updating. Some of, some of the bushes, plants, trees, it's not in that shape, so we're gonna kind of, like, in the rose garden, for example. There was, I think, eight plants in there, there, it looked like there should have been about double that or more initially from some old pictures that I saw. So we went and got like eighteen new rose garden, or eighteen new plants for the rose garden. Put those in there, we got that all hards, pulched up now and hedged, so it looks really nice. First gonna tackle little areas down there at the park, you know, one at a time, maybe and Isaiah, so. But other than that, it's about all I have for right now, unless anyone has any questions for me or.
Which we're doing spare time.
Keep diving on pumps and all that, like, are you looking at the old plans for when they put the lake in and?
That's the thing, that's the thing. We can't find like, I don't think the real plan of what that pump house is supposed to have. So I like, I don't know, I heard that, I think, I think it was initially like a water fountain at first. And I, I, that sound, like, one of the guys, I think it was that engineering place told me that that was kind of an afterthought of pump and pumping up and having a waterfall.
I think that was always planned, it was. Water hole.
It's a.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There was a fountain in there one time.
The old plants we found had the pump in the center of the lake.
Well, it's not.
It was like, no, it was a turbine pump or something on its side in the center of the lake, and it's pumping it up to the, what they call a water curtain. And then back down, we've not been able to find any plans with the pump offset like it is in that ground.
I wonder, I wonder if what we're using to pump, water pump to the curtain, used to be the fountain.
Right, I wonder.
And the other one has gotten covered up in the dredging or something.
I don't get, one of those in the middle, I wonder if we just reuse it.
We could look at, we could look at the drawing, yeah.
We could, that, that'd be great.
We've been knowing through drawings.
Yeah, we have.
Even on the drawings, it shows that the pump's sideways, that like, it does, it looks like it's in there sideways, and I know the pump's a hundred percent up and down, so.
There's a screen.
That's, that's why, I mean, that's why I wanted to go with the camera, cause I don't know.
There is a screen, it's a screen, even a, a screen gets caught.
But it looks like it should sit up like this high off the ground, though it's, it doesn't. It is.
It's about.
About a foot. See, I feel like if that's the case, a lot of that sludge and small debris to get in there.
If we go back, if we go back and we look at the pictures when they were dredging.
You can see it. Okay. I'll let.
That'd be fun for tomorrow, alright.
So as a matter of fact, look in the center of the lake too, because we might find the other inlet, I don't know.
Do the.
Why not? Probably not, that's something, they drug all the soap.
Oh, the pictures, yeah.
There was something in the center, I'm like, I didn't know what it was.
That was probably the original.
Probably the original.
Does it take it in from the center and then shoot it over there then?
We'd have to. We'd have to be bite over.
We'll find those regarding the first tomorrow.
I may be wrong, but when they, when they dredged that, seemed to be like there was something in the center. Kind of like unidentifiable, whatever it was. But you could definitely see the other one too. That's the one that was connected to the pump.
We'll figure it out, come to say.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, I think everybody is aware now that John decided to retire both of his positions, so I'm just. Um, we are gonna be hiring other persons in more of a maintenance worker one role, work alongside Isaiah under Jake. So that has been posted on Indeed, we posted that today actually, so.
Is it seasonal or?
Yeah, we talked about having it be a part-time sort of seasonal position right now, as we kind of feel out what the rhythm is gonna be. And maybe, you know, if it's the right person, then it grows into more of a year-round role, but that way it gives, takes some flexibility. Yeah, so that's kind of what we're going for there. Um, the auditors ran and completed their field work on the seven, and we have a few little loose ends that are finishing up. They did have a few suggestions, like they always do from, because we're so small, about how we can improve internal controls. So there are things that Paul and I are working on and maybe changes, just so that more of us are having hands and everything. So there's not just one person that, you know, touches certain things, so we are working through that now. We're also working with Basis to do a new credit card processing system that will streamline things and make it a lot easier. Particularly for art rentals and community reservations, so the availability to take a free authorization on a credit card for a deposit rather than have to take the deposit and then refund it in a check later, which has always been kind of the main complaint of any rent. People have just been hoarding their money for that amount of time. Um, so this will be better overall and easier for both of us to implement going forward. Um, and then I'm still working through the power and vacation rules thing, it's gotten pushed to the side, but it will, it will be back eventually. So we are doing the final walkthrough, finally, for the Crescent Avenue project tomorrow, actually. So we have three things in a row tomorrow. I have the pre-construction meeting for the Bulleye Lane entrance, so I will start notifying residents about that. Probably May first, if not earlier, because we're gonna have to have a lot of notifications. So please do go and talk to your neighbors and let them know that this is gonna happen at the end of May, early June. The street will be closed, one entrance will be closed on each side, so it'll be one in, one out on the same side. So there will be delays, it will be a headache, so start kind of preparing people now for what that's gonna be like for probably the majority of June. So we're doing that again because waiting until after school without the muscles. So I'll have a lot more information about that tomorrow, once we have our pre-construction meeting. Then in the afternoon, BFA will be here for the pre-construction meeting, they're gonna stay, they're gonna eat Jake, they're gonna have lunch. And we're gonna go and do the final walkthrough for our prospect, they can hopefully get that wrapped up. So, and then I did find out that the park lighting, electrical upgrade will be starting on April twenty-third. So they will be boring in the park, they say they do not need close to the park. So it'll be post, most of our big events, if we have, we end up having Easter eclipse. Arbor Day will be over with, so they will be working that Wednesday through Friday doing the boring, and then pole installation will be the following week. And then we will be running, so it could be, you know, big night.
The stakes in the park are, for the, for the, where the poles are gonna?
Correct, so if you go down there right now, there are orange stakes in the ground, those are the pole locations. Um, we will need to talk about maybe, they had suggested that we add a second pole, or actually, ninth pole, I guess. So the rose garden area, there is one on the left-hand side of the rose garden, if you're facing it. But they did not have one on the right-hand side, and when Jake and I went down there and on the walkthrough with them, we all kind of felt like maybe we would like to have one on both sides to light that side of the park. So that may be something we do to be a change corner, and so there's supposed to get me numbers on that to see what that looks like to add that ninth pole, so. Be one more order, and then they would obviously include that in the boring and the down, so. So, I should have had numbers.
They do electric boxes too?
There will be electric on every single pole, so, nice. So, and wifi will be working in terms of like us being able to control the lights, be a wifi that will all be included in this first case. So the lights should be up and running in the. Going great in just a few weeks, so, big idea.
The ankle?
Yep.
Will the electrical be able to be unlocked, so that everybody will be able to?
Good question, I don't really answer that, um, hard out there. And I didn't ask specifically about blocking or the way that we're bad. We can find that out.
Okay.
So that's all I have, if I ask questions about the.
Architector. Architector of City Hall as far as the roof situation.
We did not, uh, because.
Talked about it.
Yeah, we talked about it for a couple of reasons. After Jake came on, he and I talked about that a little bit, he had numbered for years to evaluate through. We all kind of felt like maybe that initial evaluation that we got was a little bit overwhelming. And maybe it wasn't really worth going down that hole and spending a lot of time on, like, any architect and trying to run all that stuff down. When probably it wasn't necessary to be there, so.
We got mixed, uh, mixed opinions. Some thought that the roof was one of the best roofs they've, they've ever seen, designed really well. So just trying to be true to all that. Jake, uh, did we find out what's going on with the wires out there?
I ended up snipping that off and just talking over it, it, I don't know what else. It shouldn't have any electric, it didn't have any electric to it.
Okay.
A meter or two, nothing on it.
Yeah, and we were walking around outside, we noticed that one of the lights that's on the outside of the building appears as if they ran electricity from the light and ran it from the wrong, the wrong spot, so it just left the wire hanging out there.
It wasn't bad, I'm saying to Lisa. Much better, right?
It could have been, it could have been only like this long from sniffed off of the wall too, and it's still coming out, you know?
And hanging up?
Like, nothing.
Yes.
But congratulations to Lisa and to, and to you, the election success. I wish you well.
Well, we're going to wish you, and we want to have a celebration dinner for you. And I'm gonna ask you for some dates that work for you.
And I like to eat.
Don't think in, maybe sometime you made R, RNG, whatever works out for you. And be for the board and spouses and whoever you wanna bring. Think you'll do it, McDonald's? But if you could, if you could just find some dates up for you and, see how, how it works for the board. Together have, let's unwind and sunny goodies.
So the toes.
We have like a toes calendar. Yeah?
Oh, no, sir, I won't do that.
Go.
Uh, I'd just like at some point to maybe get on the agenda for pricing everything to BFA and some projects. I just, there are precedents here high, which I think are probably back on projects that we need to get back on.
Yeah. You know, they, I think we've always known that they would rather overestimate a project, but I think the caution here is that sometimes we look at that figure and then back off because we think it's too much. When in fact, little sidewalk projects, a good example.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get that on. Maybe, I don't know, next agenda or one after that, so, early. Okay, any final citizen comments?
None.
If, uh, I, I think we, we have enough to cover what, what needs to be done with the eggs, but if you have your little field with DJ out there nine o'clock in the morning, certainly welcome. And the, uh, for the straight hunt, uh, it's called April, it appears as if there's gonna be a window in the afternoon. But I'm concerned about condition of the park, the rain that we're gonna get in the morning, they look pretty heavy. So even though it may not be raining at the time, maybe. Yeah, yeah, we may be canceling just.
Plant will be that old, like.
Yeah. Yeah. Hey, what time we're gonna do that?
I, I will have to, we're, I plan to be here eight, and we'll like make the decision with whoever else was here, and then we'll post it on Facebook by eight.
Where, be like, email or whatever, like, something before.
Uh, yeah, I will try to get, if I'm up here, I'll put it on Facebook first, cause I can do that from my phone. But if I can get, you're gonna email out, right? I have that in the email that I'm wanting to send, check our Facebook page, cause that will be another part of the update.
Hey, you, you're in the office or at the pavilion?
We, up here to decide or?
Um.
I was thinking at the park, just so we could look at it, but I am open to.
I had, no, I just wanted to make sure, so we know where.
You would say.
Our.
Yeah. Yeah. With that, is there a motion picture? Okay.